Okay, can I call the public hearing to order? We all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance is a flag. The United States of America and it is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee Wotecki.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. The reason, the purpose of this public hearing is for the tentative budgets for the town fund and road district funds for the year 2020, 2021 as amended. I will open the meeting initially here for public comments. Are any public comments on the amended budget? Now, this is the, this is the public hearing for the amended budget.
It's like a five-minute meeting, so.
Okay, is there any, any public comments on the amended budget for 2020, 2021? If not, are there any comments from the board or questions with the board? If not, the final vote will be taken at the regular meeting. If there's no questions or no comments, have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Give a second.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. We'll be now opening the meeting for the regular board meeting of trustees for June 28th. We'll now, we've called the meeting to order. We already done the pledge of allegiance. We do a roll call again.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee Wotecki.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney. Sorry, Bussie. Sorry.
Bussie, present. All right, we now will open the floor for public comment. Yes, sir. When you get up, if you could state your name clearly for the clerk so she can write it down and where you're from.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
My name is Alan Goldstein. I am an Elk Grove Village resident. I've been here for about 43 years. I live over by Marino's, over by Newarkian Row Wing, but I am here in the capacity as a marketing director of a group called the Northwest Concert Band. We currently have our rehearsals and concerts in a church up in Rolling Meadows. The problem is, we're fearful that the church is going to be closed because the archdiocese has already closed the school and we think they're going to close the church. We've been looking for a new room, being Elk Grove Village resident. I've known Ray Rumel at the Elk Grove Village and also Craig Johnson, and they recommended that I talk to the township. And I came here and I talked with Izzy and she showed me around. We love this room and we know it's available and we know that we could use it and be available. We would want to use it on Monday nights, except for the one night during the month where you're going to have your meetings, so we'd be rehearsing here on Tuesday. The rate is fine as far as the money. The space is perfect. The location is perfect for everybody, but we do have one issue, and this is where I was asked to talk with, with Mr. Bussie, and I decided to talk with the rest of you. We need storage space. We have heavy percussion equipment, timpani's, kettle drums, chimes. They can't be brought in and out because it's just too heavy. So, we found, talking with the people here, that there may be storage space, but they don't usually let it out to people who are using the room. So, I'm appealing to you for two things. One would be, could we use some storage space here, like that room over there? And the other thing is, if we can't, then it's going to be a deal breaker. Do any of you know of any place in this area that we use for our rehearsals? This is a great room. I figure this is about 48 by 40 feet usable. It's got the kitchenette over there. It's got the bathrooms. It's got the parking right there. So, that's the question is, you know, can we, can there be some storage area found where we can bring our stuff, maybe 30, 40 feet? The other thing is Elk Grove Village really would like us as a presence in Elk Grove because they're very arts-oriented and they like the idea of who we are. We are a 55-member band at least. We're mainly, we're mainly wind instruments, but we've been in existence for six years here in the Mount Prospect Palatine area. Before that, they were actually in Mount Prospect. Many of our players are semi-professional. Some of them have played 55 years, 60 years, 50 years, so this is not a small startup group. If you'd like to see us, you can always go onto YouTube to northwestconcertband.org. And I've got some flyers here I could leave with you folks. So, is there anything that might be able to be done to help us out?
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Certainly, the, the space is available for, would be available for your band and as long as there's availability, you certainly, your band certainly has the ability to use this space. I would have to, I know we have had a policy of not storing equipment here for liability reasons. I would have to follow up with, with our administrator and with probably our attorney on this as well, too. But at, so at this particular stage, the space is certainly available if you wanted to rent it, but I can't make any commitment on storage right now.
Okay, well, that's, that's what we'd like to find out now. So, again, the other question we may have to ask would be, do any of you know any area here in the township?
Right.
We really want to be in Elk Grove. We really want to, we'd like to be absorbed by Elk Grove as their community band. They used to have one, but it's dissolved down to, I think, three people now. So, we would like to be their band, so we'd like to be in this area.
Yeah, well, that's something that we can, we can maybe help you with as well, too. But I, at this point, I hadn't thought too much about this, so we'd probably need a little time to take a look at that. But there may be, we may be able to, if we can't do the storage here and you need storage, then we can maybe help find a referral for you, okay?
It'd be fine, you know, but I really like this room. I mean, this is perfect.
No, I would think it would be, yeah.
Yeah, and the location is fine. Everything is perfect except for that one thing.
Yeah.
The storage area. I know that through the door there, there's another door into the garage.
Right.
Perhaps an area there could be cordoned off. We could have our equipment there covered with canvases or something.
Right.
Our group is a volunteer group. We do have, we are a 501, I think, C-3.
Mm-hmm.
And we do have our, we do have insurance as well.
Okay.
Tomorrow, myself and a couple of the other people who have not been here from our group, will be coming to give it, to tour here.
Okay.
So, we've talked with Izzy about coming on over tomorrow.
Okay, well, we will, we will follow up with you, that's for sure.
We're really excited.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I'd like to hand out.
Why don't you give it to the administrator and, because afterwards he's, we could all get packages afterwards, so Mr. Piyak can take it for you.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right, any other public comment? Yes, ma'am? Sure. Please state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Heather Maldonado. I live on Dirking Terrace. I have a couple different things I wanted to go over. First of all, a noise ordinance. Is there a noise ordinance for township or is that set by county?
That's not, that's not, the noise ordinance is not set by us, no. I'm not sure if it's a county or if it's, I don't know what the governing body is there, but it's not Elk Grove Township.
So, no, okay, because I called the other day and they said that to come tonight that you guys would know. So, you don't know either, so I should go to county if I know?
No, we weren't, no, I don't, no.
Okay. Uh, county?
It's a county.
It'd be the county.
Okay. Also, in terms of, there's an empty lot next to me that I have spoken several times with Mr. Piyak about over the last few years, and so I just want to make sure that we, I think in the past, Mr. Piyak said that it was being cut, I think by township. Now it's, has another, yet another new owner, and I've been in communication with him, but I don't feel like it's my responsibility to follow up with that owner. So, I called and they, is, do I, again, do I come to you guys and you send a letter or do I go to Cook County?
Paul.
Are we, is it? We take care of the weed work.
In terms of, in terms of actual, the mowing of the property, I don't.
There's an ordinance that spells out how it's supposed to work, and I believe that we were having someone from the road district cut it the last year or so. Is that not correct? Yeah. So, we had Art, when he was the highway commissioner, had somebody cutting that, so we haven't, we haven't set it up.
We're in a, we're in a transition right now in that we, the road district was, was eliminated. It's fallen now under the township department. We will be, what we're doing is outsourcing this, so there, obviously, if there is an issue in terms of falls under the weed ordinance that we have responsibility for, then, for, how would you say, enforcing, then we will then arrange for that to be taken care of. But at this particular stage, I can't tell you who would it, who would it be, and I'd have to learn a little more about this, too. I'm not familiar exactly with this specific situation.
Okay, so at this point, I've been in contact with the owner and have let him know he owns it. He needs to maintain it.
Right, he's supposed to.
And, right, and so, he's kind of reluctantly done it, and I think he's hopefully going to continue, but if it doesn't happen, I just didn't know if I should be chasing county or come to you guys.
You'd contact, you'd contact us and we'll.
Okay, okay.
What we'll do is we'll follow up with him, and if he does not fulfill his responsibility, we'll make sure it's cut and probably bill him.
Okay, perfect. And then my last item is about, so we live on Dirking Terrace, and if you don't know, they, there's a 40,000 square foot building that was built there four or five years ago across the street. It sits in Village, because our street is Village. Township maintains it, though, so it gets a little quirky. So, the east side of the street is Township. That's where we live. The west side of the street is Village, and it's industrial. So, they built this building and trucks, semi-trucks are coming down the street. We've been talking with the mayor for the last decade about this and the dangers of this with children, and they went ahead and they built the building. They are now just renting it as of maybe approximately two months ago. So, the trucks are flying down the street. Now, I don't have a radar gun. I don't know exactly how, but you can tell they're flying. So, we went to Kevin Morrison's office, Kevin Morrison, Cook County Commissioner, Kevin Morrison's office, and they worked with Village to get at least a speed limit sign, and we're still working with Police Chief Walsh in regard to what else. So, we're wondering if there's anything more we can do, and even with the signs, like I went to Village last year, they told me to come to you guys. I went to you guys and they told me to go back there. So, I finally went to, that's why I ended up with Morrison, and it finally got it worked out. They did put up some signs, and I noticed, and I don't know if it's Village or Township because there was one on the east side put in that says trucks cannot turn right on De Vera Lane because of a weight limit, but it's on the east side, which is Township. So, is that, was that you guys that put it in? Was it us, Township?
Did we, do we put, no, we did not.
It's not. So, Village put it in even though, okay, so.
I think part of the, part of the problem here is that there, because it's Village, county, and township, there is just, there has been a constant confusion on, on this issue. And at one point, a couple of years ago, I believe we put signs up, but I don't remember there, what were the signs we put?
Barricades.
Pardon?
Through barricades.
We put barricades up and so forth to slow or to eliminate, and the county made us take them down.
Right.
And so, there has never been a real clear resolution, but it appears that if, that really the driving force almost has to be the, the county with the Village on this. We are not an obstacle anyway, but we will, we'll get back if the Village, Morrison and the Village are making progress, we'll step, we'll step back into the picture and see how we can coordinate with them.
Okay, that would be great, because as you said, it's been, it's confusing. If it's confusing for the government bodies and.
Yeah, no.
You who sit here, it's even more so for the residents because we get.
No, no, and everyone was saying, everyone was saying this.
Yes.
Then when somebody would do something, then the other body would say, you can't do it, and.
Right.
So, I, I understand and I fully sympathize with your, with your situation, and I'm, I think, like I said, the key, key components were here was the overall governing body was, was, was county, but the facility or the plant, the company was on the Village side.
Right.
So, those were the two that had to kind of come into agreement. Now, if, if they are kind of in agreement now, then it'd be easy for us now to coordinate with them.
Right, because we don't mind business. We don't mind, we understand that.
Sure.
They had the full right to build there and to drive there, but speeding through, and we talked even with the owner of the building, and she said, well, my drivers, you need to, as a parent, need to tell your child to be careful because my drivers can't see the kids on the street.
Yeah.
And I'm like, what?
Yeah.
That's not going to fly, and that just, and she said, and they can't see, we have a bunch of handmade signs on our street if you drive down. The kids made them last summer because we were like, we have no options. Nobody's helping us. So, my last thing on this is that we were wondering if, signage is great, but people, you know, they can blow that off any day.
Right.
What I was wondering, is it possible to put a speed bump? And people I've talked to just in general say, no, because of plowing and da-da-da. So, I said, okay, well, can we put a stop sign then at Lee and Dirking, like there's one at Repolo and Lee? Because you can't blow a stop sign. At least you have to slow down for it. So, I'm like, can we put a stop sign? And so, that's what I would like to just ask, if you guys can talk about it, consider it, let us know.
We certainly would consider it, and that, once again, is going to take.
Absolutely.
Coordination with the Village because it's, because we can't put a stop sign on half of the street and.
Right.
And the county who has overall oversight, so we'll have to, we'll have to talk to them about whether it's a speed bump or a stop sign, it's going to have to be agreed on by all, all the parties, but it doesn't seem totally unreasonable to me.
Okay, I would, thank you. I just want to, yeah, if you guys can talk about it, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is, this is a, this is a comment, yeah, stay in touch directly with Paul, because he's our day, okay, he's our day-to-day guy, yeah.
I talked to him for five years.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Dawn Jablonsky, 720 Repolo Drive. We're having the same issues over on Repolo, one being that the, the five-ton weight limit sign is not visible. It's blocked by the trees. The people are blowing the stop sign. The truck traffic is ridiculous down Repolo now. Our street is not made for that kind of traffic. They're driving, if they go through the stop sign at Repolo and Lee, they go straight and then they wind up going over either one of the neighbors' yards at Vera and Repolo, the fronts of their yards, and then they continue to drive on the pipeline property. They can't do that. I mean, that's very dangerous. Nothing should be on that pipeline property. The kids are playing. I feel like I'm sitting out there constantly policing, and I shouldn't have to do that, you know? It's just more signs need, something needs to be done. The signs need to be more visible. It has to be enforced that it's a five-ton weight limit street. The trucks that are coming down there weigh anywhere between 76,000 to 81,000 pounds. You need at least a football field length if that truck is loaded to get it stopped before it hits one of our children.
We can certainly, certainly work with you or, and work further on the signage and on, and on those issues. Unfortunately for the enforcement, it's the county has responsibility and the Village. We don't have an enforcement arm. The county is the enforcement arm. So, what we've got to do, it appears to me, is we've got to see to what, to how far we can go in terms of helping with the signage and in terms of working with the different parties, but the actual enforcement side and, and actually on the trucking side is going to be, it's going to be the Village and the county is what it's going to be there.
Okay, well, the county officer was out today, and he, he highly recommended that I came and speak tonight because they just had an incident where they lost a five-year-old girl that was hit by a truck in Arlington Hunt.
And who was this? This was a county police officer?
Yes, Officer Deville.
He's the one that should be able to enforce it. We don't have enforcement. There are enforcement agencies. The county police are the ones that are enforcement agency for Township roads.
Well, he just told me that I should come here and I should, you know, bring it to your, bring it to your attention, whether you's call.
Yeah.
Cook County Sheriff and get, you know.
Right.
More policing or whatever has to be done. And then he also, I mean, we've been thinking, putting our heads together. I stopped one of the truck drivers the other day, and he's like, oh, well, the GPS is bringing me this way. And I'm like, but it's a five-ton weight limit. I don't care. You're not to be down the street.
Right.
So, the other thing is, is if there could be signage where no trucks on the land mire portion before they even get committed into Repolo Drive, so it stops.
Those certainly are things that can and should be considered and I, and, and looked at, and I'm, I'm sure probably in this whole process, some of these things have gone through, have been discussed, but I, obviously, we need to relook at it. All, all I'm saying is that we certainly can look at the signage, and we can certainly look at, at how do we coordinate with the, with the trucking company and with the, and with the Village and the county, but in the end, the enforcement is not in our hands. The enforcement's, the county and the Village have to step up to if you're going to enforce the tonnage.
But Repolo, Lee, and Vera is Township, so the Village isn't going to be a part of it. They're only going to handle the Dirking side.
Well, well, yeah, they'll handle that, too, but the enforcement is the county or the, in the Village coming off the Village roads. So, I mean, we don't have an enforcement, we don't have a police force, so we don't have anything. We have to depend on the county for that. So, we'll, we'll be in touch with the county again. I mean, this is, this is an ongoing issue with the, the trucks in that area for both of you.
Yes.
And, and unfortunately, it's multiple jurisdictions, and unfortunately, some of it is, is, has got to be voluntary actions on some parties' parts as well, too, because legally, they may not be responsible, and in other ways, they are. So, it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to take, it's going to take a great deal of coordination, which has not been all that terribly effective in the past. So, we, this is something we just got to get in touch with Art and Paul. We're going to have to be in touch with the players, the, the Village players again, and the county players, because for us, you see, it's important for us that the county, we're dependent on the county in a lot of ways for a lot of the, for the, like I said, the enforcement side of it, and we don't have a lot of influence over them, though Commissioner Morrison certainly, certainly does. So, that would be somebody, too, that would be important, an important party in this discussion would be Morrison, because he's a Cook County Commissioner, and he's got a little more influence in terms of that side of the equation, which seems to me, from your discussion, to be a very important side, that these trucks shouldn't be driving over these roads if they're overweight.
They are.
But the only way they're stopped is either by the Village on your, your side or the county on both of your sides.
Right, and then the county and Cook County Sheriff say they don't have truck enforcement and division anymore, anything like that, and I'm like, it's a no-brainer, people, I mean.
Well, and that's, that's where you want to, your Commissioner Morrison should be working on getting that back into the, yeah.
And the other, my other question is, Art was in the neighborhood last week, I believe, and he took the dead-end sign down that was across the street from our home.
Yeah.
And I would like to know why he took it down, because it technically is, goes nowhere.
That was an illegal sign that was up before, and it's not one of ours. We can put a zero home on it, it's fine. Technically, the street's not a dead end.
So, it goes to Vera around to Dirking?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and it wasn't, it wasn't our sign, we didn't put that sign up, did we? So, I don't know who.
It's been there forever.
Yeah.
I think it was even under Vander Wheel.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. The other issue is the dead end at Lee, just east, I guess it would be, right, east or north of Repolo. The property's butt up. Their landscapers are cutting that, and then it's all, the grass is growing high. So, I don't know who's supposed to maintain that.
Okay, I'll have, we'll have to look into that. I'm, I'm not sure if that, because I don't, I can't visualize exactly where that is. Okay.
So, the street runs east and west, and it's the east side that the dead end is.
Okay, okay. Art, do you make a note of that, just so we can follow up on that?
Okay.
All right, so we will, we will be in touch with the county. We will be in touch with the Village. We will, we'll check on this, this property you were just talking about, but with the Village and the county, we'll be back in touch with them to determine if there is any, if, what can be, what can be done, what is in, what is in process, what is, what is being currently discussed, and where are we in terms of the, the management, the proper management of your road, so they're used properly and they're enforced properly. And we can use our influence. We can be involved in this, but like I said, in the end, for your situations, it'd be heavily the county. In your situations, it'll be more Village and county is what it's going to be for enforcement purposes. Okay?
My last thing is, we received this postcard saying that they were going to do ditch maintenance in all the neighbors on Repolo.
Do what maintenance?
We know nothing about it.
No, it's not from Township. It's from.
It's from whoever's doing, who, some company out of Crystal Lake.
I, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
Don't know.
Because we didn't know anything about it. I didn't see anything, and then all the neighbors. Or, did you get the postcard? They're fixing the ditch. What ditch? What's going on?
No.
It's weird.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
What is it?
Give it to me, I would make a call if we didn't, we don't know any problems.
Okay, all right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. It's a lot to, lot to digest right now. I mean, I've been with the board as trustee or clerk for up to 20 years, but, and I've heard these things go through, but it's, it's amazing to me that I'm still hearing about it, to be quite honest, that.
It's, it's getting there.
Well, it is, yeah, it's not funny at all. It's, it's, it's a tragedy, and once again, it's, it's a situation where there's different, different resident and commercial rights. There's, there's different jurisdictions. There's different laws and, but I think it's very good that you got Morrison involved because the county is a major player in this whole process, and they're absent, and a lot of times, they've been absent, but it sounds like they're getting a little more involved again, so that's good. Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? If not, the consent agenda, it's the authorization for the payroll bills, the town fund, the general assistance, road department sewers report, employee information on the social services, the employment center, the food pantry, transportation, and financial, and then I've also got in there a resolution 2021, seven through 2021, 11, which is, which is that, those resolutions are authorizing, are designating the public dispository and authorizing the withdrawal of municipal public monies. What this basically is, you're authorizing a new bank signature card for the new supervisor, for the new clerk, and for the administrative officer that are allowing us to, to sign the, to sign the checks. So, are there any questions, any of those? You've all been through the bills?
Yes.
Okay, and there's any issues on the bills? No?
No.
Okay. Any questions on any of the other, any of the other reports or on the, or on the resolution? If not, can I get a, a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
For a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Um, now we, um, we're going to the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of May 24th, uh, 2021, the regular board meeting. Are there any questions or any comments on those minutes?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Oh, for minutes, can I just iron a, I think?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. All in favor?
No, roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. All right. Now, at this point, we're up to presentation, so I'd like our Cory, our social services director, um, with one of our new employees, she's going to do a little presentation for us on the social services department, and then introduce her her new caseworker. I've asked, uh, the department heads, um, to, one at a time, make presentations at our meetings, so that you all become a little more familiar with where they are, what what they're doing, what 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 where they are in terms of what they're doing, and what their plans are going forward, so that we stay a little more current in terms of the various departments and their their functions and their missions. So Cory?
Thank you. I'm excited to present, but before I present, I wanted to, um, introduce our newest staff member first, um, Andrea Correo. I'll let her introduce herself, but she is brand new. This is her, um, she started two weeks ago today, so I've asked her to just say a little bit about herself. Andrea?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Andrea, and I am the new case manager here at Elk Grove Township. I worked at Hanover Township for about three years in the Youth and Family Services Department, um, as an assistant program coordinator for an after-school program. I also did my internship over at Hanover Township in the Human Services Department. I will obtain my Bachelor's of Arts in Human Services in December, and I'm also a fluent Spanish speaker, and I'm excited and ready to continue this new journey here at Elk Grove Township to continue the, um, helping the residents in need. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applause. Perfect.
Thank you. We're looking forward to having you on board, and, um, you got a great department, and what you guys do is very, very important to the township, so we're excited.
Wonderful. All right. Well, I'm really excited to be able to, um, present to the board tonight. I'm going to talk about the Social Services Department and really focus on our holistic approach to helping the residents of Elk Grove Township. Um, next slide. So, um, our staff in the Social Services Department, there are four of us, there's myself, Nina Golub, our case manager, Andrea, who you met, another case manager, and then Miriam Herrera is our program support specialist. Um, our staff is really unique in that, um, our, myself and each of our case managers are cross-trained to do every single program. So we really like when a client is working with our staff, that they can stay with that same staff member from the beginning of their journey with the township to the end. Some other entities, they might say, oh, well, Nina specializes in doing this intake, and then they do this intake, and they're trained in this. We are cross-trained in everything. And neither, even Miriam, our program support specialist, who mans our front desk, she can do screening for every single program that we're able to do. So we say, if somebody is gone, or gets hit by a bus, or anything like that, we can step in and the the group will run really smoothly. Um, we're also u- unique in that our staff has speakers of Spanish, Bosnian, Croatian, and Serbian. So we are able to communicate, um, really well with a lot of different residents of our township. Next slide. The mission of the Social Services Department of Elk Grove Township is to empower individuals and families by providing exceptional social services, programs, and resources. Through collaborations with schools, churches, businesses, and social service agencies, we strive to develop public and private partnerships that enhance the lives of those in our community. I know reading a mission statement is boring, but this really does encompass our holistic approach to assisting residents, and I'd like to give a sample case scenario of what that might look like. Next slide. So we might have someone that walks through our door, or they give us a call and say, hi, my name is Joan, I live in the township, I need to apply for emergency assistance. I'm short on my rent, you know, my rent is, um, fourteen fifty, I've only got, I'm short nine hundred dollars, um, and I've got a disconnection notice for ComEd with a three-hundred-and-eighty-dollar balance. We might say, okay, well, let's look at what's going on with Joan, the basics. Okay, we know she's a township resident, good. She has a ten-year-old son in the household, she's rented the same condo for four years. Or we look at her income. She makes fifteen dollars an hour at a full-time job, thirty-seven hours a week is what she's getting. She's bringing home about two thousand dollars a month, and she's got five fifty in the bank account. Now, if we're going to really look, um, just briefly at her expenses, okay, she's got her rent, which for a two-bedroom in Elk Grove Township is pretty, that's pretty average, even on the lower side for a two-bedroom here in Elk Grove Township. She has a pretty low car payment, her insurance, utilities, a credit card, um, she's really on the essentials, but we see that she's still about two-hundred-and-twenty dollars short per month. Next slide. So other entities would have to say, okay, application denied. Part of their criteria is being able to sustain moving forward. She's going to be in that same hole every single month, she's going to be two-hundred-and-twenty dollars short. She's always going to be short on that rent payment. But rather instead, next slide, we're really going to sit with Joan and say, okay, let's really take a holistic approach to this situation and dive in deeper. Next slide. Okay. We're going to look at the entire picture with Joan, we're going to spend some extra time with her. So we know that, um, her child's father, her partner, he's been in and out of the picture, and he moved out of the home about six months ago. He has not been on the lease because he, of his bad credit. Okay? She states that she doesn't believe she's able to fight for child support because she can't afford a lawyer. That's the next problem. Say, okay, she's also exhausted all of her savings besides that five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. However, the landlord won't take that five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, he's not agreeing to partial payments. She does have proof that she had a car repair bill in the amount of eight fifty, that again exhausted her savings besides that five fifty she has left. And then with all these changes at school, her ten-year-old son is struggling, um, at school, and the school is suggesting that he be screened for ADHD. She's recently had to take two unpaid sick days because of tooth pain. Um, she did have some unpaid sick days, but because of her son's behavior in school, he was out for a while, um, so again, that decreased her income. So now we're looking at the whole picture and saying, okay. Next slide. Let's put these puzzle pieces together. This is not just going to be the township working to assist this client. We're going to take all of our expertise and what we know, and we're going to get this woman some help. So next slide. We know the main, the main focus in our department is always going to be keeping, keeping a household housed. It is so much harder to place someone in housing than just to keep them in our existing housing. It also costs a taxpayer a lot more money when someone finds themselves unhoused. So the first thing we're going to educate her on is the current mor, um, moratorium on evictions. So a lot of people think, oh, evictions can't happen right now. That's not necessarily the case. There's a lot of paperwork that goes with it, there's declarations, right? Trustee Dante, you're a realtor, so you know all that, and so we're going to tell her kind of her rights. And we're going to explain, although that is right now, it's not going to, it's not going to fix the solution, you're still going to owe that money, um, so let's figure out how to get that income up. So we are then going to connect Joan, not with DHS, IHFS is a little bit different, it's the Illinois, um, Healthcare and Family Services. They coordinate the Illinois, um, um, excuse me, the Illinois, um, Child Support Recovery. So although Joan can't afford a lawyer, we'll still connect her with those services, but she can apply for Child Support Recovery through IHFS with other documentation that she has without a lawyer. So now, the partners, um, the father of her child's wages are immediately garnished, she doesn't have to deal with him, she doesn't have to deal with getting a check from him, comes right into her account, and that's an extra hundred-and-forty-eight dollars a week. And all of a sudden, Joan can now sustain moving forward. It's still going to be tight, but wonderful. We can now approve that application, so we can get her assistance to getting her rent on track. But she's still really going to be struggling month to month. It's going to be harder with just her income. So with, like her and every client we work with, we are going to have them work with our free employment support center. So we do not just utilize the service for those that, um, are unemployed, we especially utilize the service for people that are underemployed. Joan talked about her car repair, um, her car looked relatively new, we asked why it was so much. Well, my job's all the way out in Elgin, so I put a lot of miles on my car, my brakes are bad, all this stuff. Okay. So John Chalecki, our person who runs our employment support center, he might work with her and say, okay, maybe we'll get you something for a little bit higher pay, but more importantly, let's get you something a little bit closer to home. You're not putting so many miles on your car, then you're not having to pay so much in childcare for the after-school program, that kind of stuff. He's going to connect her with, um, free online resources for computer classes and things, things that can bump up her resume, maybe get her a couple extra dollars an hour. So that's a great resource. We're also going to work with other departments within the own, our own township. She mentioned some of that personal stuff going on. So the Social Services Department, we are not the therapy arm of the township, but it sounds like Joan needs that. So we are going to connect her with, um, adult counseling, where she's going to see her licensed clinical social worker to deal with some of those issues that she's disclosed to us specifically about that that partner that she had. Um, we're also going to connect her to our youth services. She mentioned that her son was really struggling in school, and the school suggested that her son is, um, screened for ADHD. In a private entity, that can be hundreds of thousands of dollars to get that screening done for a student. We do that no cost for the residents of Elk Grove Township here. So that saves her hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. And with that, um, we're going to connect her son to some other groups that we, so for example, he's in fifth grade, um, putting him into the transition to junior high and pop group, um, for the summer is going to be a great resource for him, really get his, um, his social skills up and all that good stuff. So that's really going to kind of help that mental health aspect. So we're also going to say, okay, what other services in the township can we provide for Joan? We ask her about the rest of the bills. You know, you came with us with a disconnection notice for ComEd, we know you're behind your rent, is there anything else you're behind in? And she says, yeah, my my NICOR, I'm behind them, but I was really nervous about the ComEd, that's, I only brought that up because I had the disconnection notice. Well, we are a service extension for Salvation Army here at the township, so we are able to do applications for residents, um, if they have an emergency, which she did, which she had reduction in income because of someone leaving her household. So we can do an application for her for up to six hundred dollars towards that NICOR bill, because that can be used for either shelter or utility costs. So that's another extra money in her pocket just for savings. She also mentioned that toothache, so we can connect her to the mobile dental clinic. Even if she has dental insurance, um, because she falls below two-hundred percent of that poverty level, we can connect her with the mobile dental clinic. So that, of course, is the partnership between, um, Northwest Community Hospital, us, Schaumburg Township, Palatine Township, and Wheeling Township. So only thirty dollars per visit for adults, that's going to save her a lot of money in getting that tooth fixed, and then help her not miss so much work. Um, we, of course, are going to connect her to the food pantry. There's no income guidelines for the food pantry, of course, you just have to be a township resident, but that, even though she has the link card, SNAP, or formerly noticed food stamps, um, you cannot buy paper products or cleaning products with those. So if she can come and use our food pantry month to month, especially with a ten-year-old boy who eats a lot of food, that's really going to help her out. And then we're going to stick with Joan. We've met her immediate needs right now, but we're going to make sure that as long as she's income eligible, we're going to remind her to keep applying for those services that she is eligible for. So for example, as long as she's income eligible, we're going to remind Joan, hey, every year, come in for LIHEP, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, and that's a nice little grant on that ComEd and NICOR, um, that you are eligible for. That comes from federal funding down to state funding down to agencies like ours. Next slide. So that is just an example of this particular client and what we might do for them. So, um, I just really wanted to look at that holistic approach, but it's not all of the services that we provide in the Social Services Department, of course. So the the main program that we do administer is general assistance. General assistance is a monthly grant for, um, residents that do not have any dependents, they're not, um, age-eligible for social security yet, and they are not eligible for any other state or federal funds, um, assistance programs. They're either injured and applying for disability, have, there's a lot of documents, they've got to prove all of this, or they're job searching. So that is something, of course, you guys recognize, is one of the three branches of township government that we have to administer, so that one's really important. Um, of course, we provide emergency assistance, so that is, um, shelter and utility costs if someone is in life-threatening need, which they are, if they're about to be evicted, or their, um, power or gas is about to be turned off. Um, the next thing that's, um, special about our township is the Community Empowerment Fund, which is the separate 501(c)(3) with its own board. We have discretion to do those applications and apply those funds. For example, we might have someone who comes to us and they don't qualify for emergency assistance, maybe they don't have, um, a social security number, or maybe there is something like a bill that is not covered under those, um, guidelines. We do have, um, the ability to help in that way. Next slide. Of course, one other really important thing that we do, um, is LIHEP, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. That's something that folks in Cook County can apply for once a year. Last year, we completed, um, between all the SEDA programs, we completed almost four-hundred applications, which is amazing, um, and also is income for the township, because we get reimbursed on each of those applications. They also provide weatherization service, um, so for those that own their home, um, maybe they're drafty and whatever, they do have people that come out and take a look in how they can make their home more energy efficient. They also have a furnace program. So for those that are income eligible, if their furnace is broken, um, or not running well, they might be eligible to get that, um, fixed as well. Next slide. Of course, I talked about the mobile denti, dental clinic, so that is a partnership with those townships and Northwest Community Hospital. Um, household has to be under two-hundred percent of federal poverty level. It is thirty dollar per visit for adults, um, and it's free for kids. So it's an incredible service, and the clinic is, it's just, it's a, it's obviously, it's a, it's a moving dental van, they do x-rays, extractions, root canals, they'll even do wisdom teeth if they're not impacted, which is incredible, because that is also incredibly pricey. Um, two other programs that we are able to provide, ComEd hardship and NICOR sharing. ComEd hardship, of course, is a five-hundred-dollar grant for those that are income eligible, that have had a hardship, like a victim of crime, um, or, um, natural disaster. And then NICOR sharing is a nice program. We have a lot of seniors that apply for this program. It's a grant for those that are just a little bit over income for LIHEP, but they're still not, you know, making a ton of money. Next slide. And of course, we've got our medical lending closet. This has been so popular recently, it was just fantastic, so we've got wheelchairs and walkers and all that good stuff. And right now, it seems like we're just getting flooded, because during COVID, a lot of those elective, um, procedures were kind of on hold. People are going, hey, your knees and your hips, let's wait a little bit, but I think that they're doing them now, so we're constantly getting phone calls, um, which is great. We also have the library, so people can come rent out books. And I mentioned that Salvation Army service extension site. This is, um, really exciting. Elk Grove Township has been an extension site for quite a while, but for whatever reason, it wasn't really being utilized. So we are proud to say that since January, we've actually completed nine thousand nine-hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents worth of applications for residents, which is pretty good, and it's also then money that we're, um, doing externally, so we're freeing up that from township funds. And then we're also leaving those emergency assistance grants open for folks. So maybe they come to us and they've got a four-hundred-dollar bill, and I say, you know, you're eligible for this, let's do this instead, just in case you need that larger emergency assistance grant later. But it also saves the township a lot of money. We complete access to care applications for those are, um, uninsured or underinsured, um, folks in suburban Cook County that need insurance. Next slide. And of course, we have our seasonal program. So currently, our back-to-school blast off is happening right now. So, um, we've got our flyers everywhere, we've got our boxes, so if you want to donate any school supplies, here's the place to do it. Um, of course, we have snow angels with, you know, snow pants and boots and all that good stuff, um, Thanksgiving baskets, Easter baskets, our holiday program where we give gift cards to, um, families. And this past year, we actually extended that to low-income seniors, which is really wonderful. Um, of course, we are a hub for resources and referrals. We train our staff constantly. If somebody calls us for an issue, we never say, we don't do that, that's not here, right? We might get that call about the ditches or something, and our answer, that's not us. We always get an answer for somebody. Um, you might get a call, hey, I have a dead raccoon in my backyard, aren't you the people? No, but let me find out who you contact. And of course, um, any other referrals, legal referrals, domestic violence referrals, anything, we're the answer. We don't know the answer, we're going to get it for a resident. And then, of course, our, um, our department also does the food pantry intake, so we're And then, of course, our, our department also does the food pantry intake, so we're confirming someone lives within, within the township and that their pantry card is up to date. We get all of that good information. So, next slide. So that is an all-encompassing of a portion of what we do. There's always more to learn, so our staff is constantly, especially those funded agencies, we're doing site visits, we're learning more. There's always more to learn. So if you guys ever have any suggestions for our, for our group, or, you know, anything, hey, I saw that they're doing this, this would be a good idea for you guys, or I have questions, please contact me. We're always looking to expand, we're always looking for new ideas to help our residents, so I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Do any of you have questions for Cory?
No, I, I would like to say, you know, I, I, you know, I would like to, I admire and commend what you're doing with the group. As a real estate agent, as you already stated, I am an attorney, a counselor, a marriage counselor, a psychiatrist, and lastly, you know, the real estate side of things, right? And, and so I hear and see a lot of the things that, you know, go on, and, and I think that what you're doing here is absolutely phenomenal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to add too, is I think what's fascinating to, if you pay attention here, not just the breadth of the services they provide. I mean, you've got a director and two caseworkers doing all these things, but then on top of it, it isn't just, it's not transactional for them. They aren't just giving them an emergency assistance check and send them out the door, but as the, you saw, they're, they are, they have, they have developed a more holistic approach so that the person who comes in here with a problem leaves with a solution, not just for that problem, but for as many of the other problems that are driving that primary problem as possible. And, and that's the only way that this person's going to get back on the street, back in the community, back as a productive member of the group and, and able to care for themselves again if they follow that approach. Otherwise, we're just, we're just continuing the process of, of needing help, needing help, needing help. So I, I think what they're, what, what this department's done under Cory's leadership is extraordinarily important for our community. I think it's absolutely the right, right way to approach this. I think it's very unique in that no other government body is doing this to this degree or to this effectiveness. And at the same time, it's also the last place a lot of people can come to get help.
If they know about it.
If they, if they, and that's why it's important for us to make sure people know about what they're doing and what we can offer, because I think that people don't under, don't, don't realize what, for a very small amount of bond of their taxes, what resources are here for them and for neighbors and friends who need assistance.
Our favorite phrase is always, wow, I had no idea the township did all, you know, I came for this, and all of a sudden, I'm signed up for the bus service, and I've gotten food pan, so that's our favorite. I didn't realize the township did all of this, so.
Andreas.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cory, I really appreciate. And like I said, we'll, each meeting, we'll have a different department come in here and present. And anytime any of the board members would like a department had to come to talk about a particular program or a particular issue, through Paul, we will invite them to come back and speak, all right? Because I want to keep the board as connected with the staff, the great staff that we have and the great things we're doing, so that you are knowledgeable and that you are aware of where this money you have a fiduciary responsibility for, where it's going, and what it's being used for. Okay, thank you again, Cory, thank you very much, and welcome aboard. I think at this particular stage, you got the elected officials' reports. Assessor Caricelli is not here today, but she submitted a written report, which you should have seen.
I did.
And now we have the clerk's report.
We had two FOIA requests this month, both on commercial, commercial properties that are on my report. We had no filings. And then, just a few other things, all the elected officials completed the required sexual harassment training. The Illinois Attorney General's website is still down, so I will notify our new trustees when that's up for them to take the Open Meetings Act training. And then notices about our amended tentative budget and appropriation ordinances were put in the Daily Herald the last week of May. The only other thing I wanted to mention is I gave the trustees a handout. There's a virtual training program from Township Officials of Illinois. It's offered two different days. If you are interested and you can attend that virtually, just let Paul know, and he will register you for it. And then, if you complete that, just give me the certificate that they give you, and I will file that for you. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Simone. Is, Earl, are you getting perspective, getting the Perspective Magazine now? Are you, are you guys getting the perspective?
Yeah.
Yeah, we get it.
The two of you, have you guys getting yet? All right, so we need to make sure that they, yeah, we just got the, yeah, okay, we just got the June one, they should have got the, well, anyway, in, in the Perspective Magazine, a lot of the, Sue Ellen is, I think, got us off to a great start on the training. But you can always look in here, and there's always opportunities for, for training events, either online or in person, that particularly when you're a new trustee, and the first couple of years, I think are very advantageous to try to go to those as much as you can. And we will cover your cost for attending those, those sessions. Sometimes they're local, sometimes they're in Rockford, but it's important for you to get as familiar with as much of the, what your, your job's responsibility is as possible now, rather than waiting a year or two down the line. And Sue Ellen will stay on top, will, will keep everyone kind of informed of the different opportunities out there, and also will continue to follow up on required training, which I think there's three or four things that she'll make sure that we all get that done. Okay, anything else? Any questions for the clerk? If not, then the supervisor's comments. I've got a bunch of things kind of to go through here. Just real quick, though, I want to thank Clerk Saturn for putting together our participation in the Mount Prospect July 4th parade, and I want to thank those trustees that are going to participate in it with our food truck. I, I think that our participation in these parades, some of the municipal and other events, will create a little more awareness of the township and what we do. And I really encourage you all to, as often as you can, to work with Sue Ellen to make sure that we have a representation in these different events, so that the public are, you know, once again, gets a little bit more of a, we get a little more exposure, and they become more aware of what we're doing. I also, just so you know, we're still in discussions with Elk Grove Village about the North Side remediation project. I believe we've made some progress there. There's been a sort of a tentative, and I say tentative agreement, that we will allow them to move forward with their company to do the remediation, and they will pay for us to have a consultant to oversee it. However, I say it's tentative because I also indicated that if this drags on too long, and they do not move forward in a, in a, in a timely fashion as we define it, I will, I will, we will at some point bring in our own remediation company to do it, we'll just charge them. We can't, we don't want to wait forever on this, and, and, and we have, we have, it's, this remediation's holding up a number, a number of other issues. So hopefully, this will now move forward smoothly, we won't have to deal with any of that, but that's kind of where we stand right now. And I think the only, only thing bad about this really right now is that it probably at this stage, I don't see the bike safety or the challenge course getting, getting done until well, well into fall, if even then, do you? Paul?
We're still hopeful to get a fall session.
Yeah, I, I think it's getting, I think it's getting more iffy every day that we don't get, that we, that we don't, this doesn't get more immediately addressed. So that, we're in process there still. Also, just as, so you're aware, the first Wednesday of each month, starting July 7th, the food pantry will remain open until 7:00. This is a pilot program, the first Monday of every month, the pilot program where they, the food pantry will be open in the evenings, and we're going to see what the demand is and how effective staying open, how much of a difference it makes for the community. If, if it is in high demand and heavily used, then we'll consider adding other evenings as well.
Is this Monday or Wednesday?
At this point, it's Wednesday, what, the first, the first Wednesday of each month will stay open to 7:00, and we'll do this for a couple of months and see how it goes. If the demand seems relatively good, maybe we'll expand it to two Wednesdays then, and who knows from there. But all right, at this point right now, we're trying to get some evening time in for those that perhaps aren't able to get to the pantry during the day. So that's in place, it's a pilot program. Second thing is, I wanted to announce, and most of you probably know that Art has been hired as a part-time road department field supervisor. His various responsibilities, he has a number of responsibilities, but I, I think if we're talking about the, the primary ones, it's to perform sort of in-person reviews of all township roads once a week, just to make sure that the road, everything's fine, that drainage conditions are good. So he'll be doing a regular overview of all of our, of all of our roads. He will also be spot-checking vendors' work during and after the completion of the various projects that we have out there, to making sure that they're being completed to our levels or require, or our required levels. He'll also be identifying any issues that I or the administrator need to follow up on as well too. He'll be in charge of weed control, he'll be the weed control officer, whatever that is, you have to wear a weed control hat or something, or, okay. And he'll also be maintaining the road equipment, road department equipment that we, that we still maintain. We're going to be outsourcing most of our responsibilities here, and Art's, that's an over, sort of an oversight responsibility, he has of the vendors, but we will keep a few pieces of equipment, the pickup truck, maybe the plow, just as a backup, is what we do, and Art will maintain that. So Art is, is our new field supervisor, and I'm glad we're able to kind of transition him into that, because he brings a ton of experience into this position. And he'll be working with Paul in this, in, in this role, in this, 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 this new responsibility for the town, the town, the town department. Let's see, one other thing to just let you know, that we're in the process of, I think we've been, we're expecting approval either for one day, or, I mean, two days or three days a week for a VSO office, that's a Veteran's Service Office. In the past, we had a Veterans, I forget, what was the, what was the previous one we had?
Counselor.
Veterans Combat Counseling Office, but it, it was not, it was very specific for counseling for guys that have been in combat PTSD. This is a much broader service that's being provided by VSO in terms of helping people with their benefits and referrals and things like that. And I think it's going to be, I mean, it'll be great for us in terms of providing services to the veterans in our community, as well as in getting them exposed to the other services that we can provide. And we'll, we'll be getting, hopefully, a word back on that, and they'll, we'll provide an office for them to work out of either two or three times a week.
George, has that been, have you spoken with Dutch with regards?
No, I did not, not talked to Dutch about that. This goes through the, it's a state, it's a state program.
He's, the only reason I mentioned it was, is he's providing those services.
So is he, is he, is he a VSO officer?
I believe so. I think he's providing some of those services with regards to benefits and, so, just as a resource.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with him and see if it's the same thing or not, yeah.
I just wanted to remind you guys, when you talk like that to each other, make sure you're talking to the microphone, if they can't get it, keep on the video.
Oh, okay. All right. And then another thing to pass on is that I passed out sheets to you, we are establishing, there's a couple committees that I'd like to get set up, board committees. One of the one I want to get started right away is the Agency Grant Committee. This will be a committee which is, which, as the sheet says here, is responsibility for, for reviewing the agency grant procedures, for reviewing the grant application forms, for ensuring that the applications are set out, and people that need to know about the program know about the program, for then reviewing the applications when they get in, setting up presentations if it's appropriate, and then making a recommendation to the board for what agency grants should be made. What I'm hoping what this does is it provides a, a, it, it, it takes our, our board further along in terms of identifying what agencies we really need to support, which are those that are most beneficial to our community, which are those that, that are not, you know, who are not, we're not duplicating services, and which are those that our, our service, our social services and family counseling use the most. Where we're actually, where we, where there's a more comprehensive and complete analysis of who we're, who we're giving money to, perhaps we give it to few, but more. And I, I just feel pretty strongly that this is something that we've, we've needed to look at, we've needed to look at for a while, and we have to make sure that our dollars are going, the taxpayers' dollars are going to the right place to have the biggest impact. The committee will be chaired by the clerk. I'll have, ask the Social Services Director and the Counseling Clinical Director to be on it, and then two trustees. And if any of the trustees, any of the trustees want to volunteer, talk to, to Sue Ellen afterwards. If nobody volunteers, I'll appoint. Okay? All right, so that, what else, do I get anything else here? Yeah. I have, I've been meeting with the department heads and have had extensive discussions with the administrator here. And as a result of all of these discussions and meetings, a number of operational changes, some are in place, some are still being worked on. And I will provide the board with sort of a write-up on that in terms of what are, these are operational, not big strategic things, just things that we're doing differently in terms of day-to-day operations. And I'll make the board aware of what some of those changes have been in the next month or two. An example would be, there was some concerns among the department heads that there was not a lot, internal communication, that there was not enough feedback and information going between the departments, that even though we were in one building, we're still separated. So a couple of small things we did is we created an inter-office newsletter, Izzy's putting this out on a monthly basis, that talks about what some of the different departments are doing, what's happening with people, that they have baby, or they, you know, just to keep, provide information among the different departments so they stay familiar. Also, there's a Monday morning department heads meeting now, even just for 10, 15, 20 minutes, to make sure that we're, the department heads are on the same page and maybe sharing information, let it be helpful between the two. And then, we're also setting up, and I think Paul started this, a, a monthly kind of staff get-together lunch, where we bring in lunch to the, to the, to the staff. And I think for the summer months, we're looking at doing that, or?
Yeah, it, it actually starts this week, last Wednesday.
Okay. And the idea on that too is getting the staff together, having a little time together, sit down, we have lunch catered for them, and they get to talk and see each other, and just, just create more of a sense of teamwork and, and shared information and, and, and being part of a single group. The last thing that I will do, I wanted to address, is that we will return to the normal Zoom policy for elected officials. We could do it, and I'd kind of get a little bit of feedback here, I mean, it's a decision I can make, but we could start next, I mean, we go to the normal process next month, or August, or September, and then the, the normal process, it's, it's, you have to be, to be able to participate in the Zoom, you have to, a Zoom, you have to either be on business or have a medical situation?
Yes, patients that are just out of town will count.
Yeah, you have to, it's be, you have to be out of town for business reasons, or there's a medical reason that you can't get into the meeting. Now, we're, I think we're at a point where we should be able to transition to the normal policy in the near distant future, but I'm open to when you guys feel that that transition should be made. Any, any thoughts?
I think maybe we should start doing it next meeting.
Go to the normal process next meeting?
Yeah.
Anybody else say anything? Any other, yep?
I agree.
You're okay? Okay, I'll take that. If you're all kind of, that's the consensus. If that's the consensus, then next meeting will be on the normal, the normal process. Okay? Thank you.
Those, those opportunities.
All right. I don't think, I think that's it right now. There's a lot going on. I'm really excited, both from a larger picture, as well as sort of, like I said, the more specific operational things, and we'll keep you informed. And, and some of the department heads have came up with some great ideas and some great initiatives that I think are, are going to really improve our, our effectiveness. We, we're in a great situation right now. We've got a new facility, we've got, we've got, in a lot of ways, new staff, we've got people interacting and communicating, we've got a real ability to kind of step forward and really make an increased impact in the community and be an increased value. And I want to keep that momentum going. Mike put us in a very good position, I want to keep that going and not slack off here in any way. Okay, I guess at that point, if there's, are there any questions for either the clerk or me? If not, is there a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no correspondence, old business, no old business, new business. As we had in the open, I'm sorry, in the public, the public hearing, we are addressing ordinance 20, 2020, 2021 Budget and Appropriations Ordinance for the Town Fund. And then, we are addressing the in-ordinance number 2020-20RD, Road District Budget and Appropriations Ordinance. If you remember, we're having to amend the budgets from, from last year because in some ways, some, some bills had to be, got paid in last year when they should have been paid, when we were expecting to be paid the year before, and other things, we had more expenses in certain areas, particularly on the road and bridge projects, than we had, had expected or in this building. And so we're having to, we have to, legally, we're required to have a balanced budget, so we're amending 2020, the 2020, 2021 budget, fiscal year budget, we're amending that so that we have a balanced budget. And we're, we're within, we are within the bounds of being able to do this through the amending of these two, of these two budgets. So if, I can take them individually, or if someone like to make a motion to approve both the, the road and bridge and the Town Fund ordinance, we can go with that as well
I make the motion to approve both of them.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nyardowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, the third one here is the employee handbook. I think we provided you guys with the handbook package. I'm not going to, I'm, I'm just, I don't want to go with a vote here at this meeting, or approval vote this meeting, I want you guys to have another moment, because it's, it takes a little time, I think, to digest all this. Go ahead and read through it, we'll, we'll put it up for approval at the next meeting. Go ahead and read through it, we'll, we'll put it up for approval at the next meeting. If you have any questions on the changes, or just on, you know, what's in there, please give me or Paul a call, and we can, we can discuss it. Or if there's other changes you think are missing that should be in there. So read the document, see if you agree with the, with, or if you're comfortable with what the document says, what the changes are, or if there's anything you'd like added to it. And let's, we're, we're addressing this now so that we get into a, so we've got a, a workable, updated package going forward here. Okay? So I think we're gonna, we're gonna, so take a look and be ready to, to discuss and vote on this at the next meeting. Tell you one other thing related to this, I've also asked Paul to have all the department heads write up job descriptions for each of their, for their departments, for a position in their department, using a certain format that we laid out, so that we have job descriptions for everyone, and that, and that's when we get into a hiring process, we're not just creating jobs, we actually have jobs set up. And we know also what this is important. We also know then how to evaluate people, because they have a job description, they have responsibilities, they have duties that we can judge them, that we can evaluate them against. And I, that has not been, it has not been, it's not in place the way it really should be at this point. So Paul's working with the department heads on that. If there's nothing else, there's no executive session matters. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
A second.
All in, there's no discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Great, we're adjourned.